Good afternoon, this is the Thurston County Board of County Commissioners for October 30th, 2018. I'm Commissioner Bud Blake, Chair of the Board this year. I'd like to start off by doing a few introductions. To my left is Commissioner Gary Edwards, to my right is Commissioner John Hutchins. His right is Labanita Beaumark, Clerk of the Board, and to her right is Romero Chavez, the County Manager, and his right is the Assistant County Manager and Budget Officer, Robert Campbell, and to her right is Elizabeth Petrit, Deputy Prosecuting Attorney. With that in mind, I'll ask Commissioner Hutchins to lead us into the Pledge of Allegiance.
Please stand. And inclined I will ask the Olympia City Mayor Cheryl Selby to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mayor. And with that in mind, I'll ask if there's a motion to approve today's agenda.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve today's agenda of October 30, 2018.
Second?
It's been moved and seconded as stated. All those in favor say aye.
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 Aye, and that motion carries. There's a motion for the Board Meeting Minutes for October 16, 2018.
Moved to approve the Board Meeting Minutes from October 16, 2018.
Second?
It's been moved and seconded to approve the Board Meeting Minutes for October 16, 2018. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, and that motion carries as well. We have two presentations today, and one is from a returning presentation, but it's always great to see the regional library and the Timberland Regional Library. So today we have Cheryl Haywood, who is the Director of the Library System and for Regional, Timberland Regional Library, and she is going to tell us what's been going on, give us up to date, and where we're going in the future with the library.
Thank you. Thank you for that opportunity. Good afternoon, Commissioners. Actually, I'm here today to not necessarily share all the great stuff that's going on at your libraries. I'm here today to celebrate the past.
The past?
The past 50 years of Timberland Regional Library. So 50 years ago this November, the residents of the unincorporated areas of the five counties of Thurston, Mason, Pacific, Grace Harbor, and Mason Counties, or Lewis Counties, voted to form an inter-county rural library district. And what I brought with me today is a proclamation for you to read to help celebrate the 50 years. So you have a copy of the proclamation with you.
You want to read now?
Yes, please.
Well, let me start off with typically, the proclamation's like this size.
Yes.
But you know, when you win the publisher's clearinghouse, you get that big check?
Yeah.
Here's the proclamation I'm reading today. Huge.
What a big system.
The print, okay. "Timberland Regional Library's 50th Anniversary, 1968/2018." A lot of whereas's.
There are a lot of whereas's.
Whereas, "The Timberland Regional Library is celebrating 50 years of public library service to the residents of Mason, Lewis, Pacific, Grace Harbor, and Thurston Counties. And whereas, 'At a general election held on November 5, 1968, in Mason, Lewis, Pacific, Grace Harbor, and Thurston Counties, a measure for the formation of a five-county inter-county rural library district in the unincorporated areas received a majority of the vote in each of the respective counties. And whereas, 'On December 16, 1968, the Board of Thurston County Commissioners signed a resolution declaring the formation of an inter-county rural public library district. And whereas, 'Since 1969, TRL, or Timberland Regional Library, has built and provided services and libraries in unincorporated areas of the five counties including Amanda Park, Belfair, north of Mason, Hoodsport, Nacelle, Ocean Park, Packwood, Randall, Mountain View, Salcom. And whereas, 'Over the years, the residents of Aberdeen, Centraya, Chehalis, Elma, Hoquiem, Ilwako, Lacey, McCleary, Modestino, Morton, Oakville, Olympia, Raymond, Shelton, South Bend, Tenino, Toledo, Tomwater, Westport, Winlock, and Yelm have voted to annex to Timberland Regional Library. And whereas, 'Under its statutory authority, Timberland Regional Library offers library services to the people of the five-county area, including the confederated tribes of the Chehalis Reservation, Nisqually Indian Tribe, Quinault Indian Nation, Sho' Walter Bay Tribe, Sho' Water, and Squawson Island Tribe, Skokomish Indian Tribe, Squawson Island Tribe, Yakima Nation. And whereas, 'The Timberland Regional Library's values of service, integrity, collaboration, and community focus support the library's mission and vision statements. And whereas, 'The Timberland Regional Library has adapted to the changes in technology that have refined what is known as a library while remaining a collection of books and the information and inspiration they contain. And whereas, 'Over the years, the Timberland Regional Library has offered programs for all ages, outreach services, literacy initiatives, job seeker, and small business services and resources, computer training, internet access, and other means of community support and enrichment to meet the ever-changing needs of the residents. And whereas, 'Through times of prosperity and recession, Timberland Regional Library has continued to serve the people of Grace Harbor, Lewis, Mason, Pacific, and Thurston Counties as a place of lifelong learning, culture, and community. And therefore, 'In appreciation and respect for the extraordinary public library system operated by the Board of Trustees, staff and volunteer, local library boards, and volunteer friends of the library, and the Timberland Regional Library, do hereby recognize the 50th anniversary of the Timberland Regional Library and proclaim heartiest congratulations. A witness thereof, I have unto set my hand in the year 2018.'" I've never said that before. And there's a whole slew of people who set their hand unto this. Congratulations.
Thank you.
The library had to read that, huh?
Yeah, a librarian wrote it. But there's nothing about the Dewey Decimal System. Now, we can get a picture?
Sure.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
We like taking pictures. Can you carry it? Come on up here. I'll be right there, Gary there.
Yes, we are good.
Who else you want up here?
No.
Did anybody else? You didn't bring all of them?
No.
All right.
Wait.
What was that?
There's a fuzz on there.
What was that?
Inapparition.
There you go.
Thank you.
Thank you, Cheryl.
Oh, boy.
Alrighty. Nothing's great to start off with a librarian's proclamation. So next we have the Sheriff's Office here to, Sheriff's Noza, to present the 2018 Champion Children Awardee. And with that in mind, I'll have the sheriff come forward and talk about the Fight Crime and Invest Kids Program, and then we might do an award.
Mr. Plausch, can you hear me?
Yeah, okay, sure. Probably 29 could come up too. I know it's a tandem thing there. I didn't see you sitting there, sorry. Yeah, yeah, I got you. Go ahead, sir, you got the floor.
First off, I want to say thank you very much for doing this. Before I get started, I just want to make it very clear that Fight Crime Investing Kids, every police chief and sheriff in the state of Washington and prosecutor supports Fight Crime Investing Kids. So I just want to say that it's one of the programs that I know that U.S. Commissioners are very familiar with, and some of you have actually partaken in and been part of. So I want to say thank you very much. We have been asked by the Washington State Director Erica Hallock to present this award to Thurston County. Unfortunately, she was able to make it here. Fight Crime Investing Kids is a national comprised, national organization comprised of police chiefs, sheriffs, prosecutors, and violence survivors protecting public safety by promoting solutions to steer kids away from crime. And Washington State Fight Crime Investing Kids has nearly 240 members. In addition to you both, Thurston County Fight Crime Investing Kids include Olympia Police Chief Ronnie Roberts, Tomwater Police Chief John Wicks, Chief of Police Todd Stansel from Yelm, myself, and also Chief Dusty Pierpoint, who retired just yesterday, and obviously John 29. So one of Fight Crime Investing Kids' top priority is expanding home visiting. Home visiting is a voluntary, proven way to support and strengthen families in the first years of life. Trained home visitors and parents work together to address prenatal care, infant care, child development, and parenting skills. Research has long proven the many benefits of home visiting, including reduced child abuse and neglect, and reduced crime and domestic violence. Fight Crime Investing Kids has selected Thurston County as a 2018 Champion for Children Awardee because of the county's commitment to advancing home visiting. In particular, Fight Crime Investing Kids recognized the Board of Commissioners' commitment to serving families through its Nurse Family Partnership Program. Thurston County NFP has served 339 families this year since January, delivering 3,205 home visits since January, and saw 97 babies born. This includes investment of significant county-only funding to expand service. Additionally, the county is serving as the backbone for an innovative partnership with Lewis and Mason Counties wherein the nurse visitor is an employee of Thurston County and provides services to Lewis and Mason Counties. Finally, the entire team of the Nurse Family Partnership Program serves as excellent ambassadors for home visiting. They have brought many legislators and legislative staff on home visits to see the benefits of the program firsthand. This has translated into legislative support resulting in a 40% increase in state funding for home visiting for 2018. It is an honor to recognize Thurston County for its commitment to children and families. Thank you very much.
So I'll just say, first of all, the Board is really to be commended to support this program the way that it has. But we would certainly be remiss if we didn't point out the incredible staff that makes this program happen on the ground. I've had some really incredible personal experience with this group, working with them to teach them about hope theory, incorporate that into their program, but also to go out on one of these visits and actually ride along. It's an incredible experience. And I just think we need to recognize how fortunate we are to have this incredible group of people working in our county to keep, to help families and keep kids safe. And so that's what I would like to say. And I have here a plaque from Fight Crime Investing Kids, recognizing Thurston County as the 2018 Champion for Children and Youth Award, presented to Thurston County for its commitment and leadership in the effort to prevent crime by helping kids get the right start in life. And with your permission, I'd like to approach with the sheriff, and we'll present this to the Board.
With the sheriff.
Yeah, with the sheriff. All right. Thank you so much, sir.
Absolutely.
You bet.
Yes, sir.
I'm going to want to get a photo with this too. You want to get a photo?
You got a photo?
Yeah, sure.
Thank you.
And we will bring up?
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah.
This one's the face. You want to do that first?
Could I say just a little bit about them before we do that? So first of all, if you are a Nurse Family Partnership nurse, please stand.
Yes.
Yes. And then Gretchen and Kathy, come join me. And then everybody else, go over, get ready for the picture. I have some special things to say about Gretchen and Kathy. This is Gretchen Toller, our maternal-child health manager. She's been with the NFP program since its inception, 15?
2004.
Since 2004. So she was the very first nurse hired for Nurse Family Partnership. Kathy Sherman is also a Nurse Family Partnership nurse. And how long have you been with the program?
About seven years.
About seven years. So when Erica Hallick contacted us and let us know that Thurston County was receiving this award, she said that the organization especially wanted to thank both Gretchen and Kathy for their efforts to take legislators on home visits with them, which they believe led directly to that increase in funding. So we want to recognize them especially and say thanks to Gretchen and Kathy.
Come on up here. We got photos, we got things to say, we got flowers. Stand right here. Stand right here, and one of y'all grab this. Kathy, come on in here. There you go. To your right, to your right, to your right, to your right.
Proud in, proud in.
There you go. Alright. Alrighty. Who else we missing?
Okay. One, two.
You need more? Okay, great. Yay!
Thank you, guys.
Okay. Oh, you can keep that. But before you leave, no nurses are allowed to leave yet. Gary has something to say? I have something to say.
I would like to point out that I had a good home visit with Kathy one day. Went out and saw some of their interactions firsthand. And you've all heard me say this before, but I never pass up an opportunity. You know, kids are 30% of our population, but 100% of our future, and this is just a good example of where we place our resources where it really counts. Thank you very much for all you do.
My two kids and our six grandkids are part of every breath I take. And in time of tight budgets, and we just went through a whole season of budget stuff, there are difficult choices to be made, but we must be sure that we use every limited resource we can on the priorities. And I can't place any higher priority than on our, in our youth and our children. So I thank you very much for all that you do, and I think that's a dollar well spent.
Yeah, and special thanks to the sheriff and the prosecuting attorney, and all those who are involved in Fight Crime and Invest Kids, because it's more than just an investment. It is our future, as Gary alluded to. For my four years that I've been here, when I walked, it was my second day at work, and Gretchen grabbed me by the arm and said, "You will be part of this NFP." And this is what I'll be doing. And it's been absolutely phenomenal to watch lives turn for the right direction. And being there with the nurses and the Nurse Family Partnership Program has made a difference in each and every person they touch, both the mom, the child, and the extended family. That's the beauty part of this. And when I go to the picnics, or I'll go around town, or around the county, and they'll bump into a recipient of the Nurse Family Partnership, and they are so happy to have been involved because they could have gone off on a different way of life, and we would have been not doing the preventive things that are needed, to be able to help that mom, that young woman, turn into a great mom. And that's what it's really about, and be able to have that fresh start that we all need to be able to go and raise the child and children. And I just think it's absolutely marvelous that we have this here in Thurston County, the best program in the state and the nation, and we're going to continue supporting it as far as we can. So thank you very much, every single nurse that's out there, and those who participate in this. So with that in mind, oh, oh, one thing. Cake. We have cake, and that's the best part of this, yeah. At 3 o'clock downstairs in room 152. So come join us and celebrate that, this moment in time, as far as the Fight Crime Investing Kids Awardee, and then Nurse Family Partnership. So anything else?
Nope.
Anything else? Okay, we'll move on. So the next item we have on the agenda is the opportunity for the public to address the Board. And so I have two sheets here, and the rules go like this. You'll see the clock up on the right here that Labanita controls with a little magic wand over there. And she'll put three minutes up there. When it counts down from three minutes to zero, you hear the little "ahhh" popcorn microwave sound, and that means your time is up. However, we want you to be able to finish your thought. So if you're midstreaming your thought, please finish it up, but I'll kindly ask you to prompt you to finish. And so when you come to the podium, I ask you to state your first name, last name, and generally where you live in the county. Of course, like I said, there's three minutes, and you cannot donate that to anybody. And then we do not want any kind of lewd language, or profanity, or anything that's discriminatory, or anything like that. So keep it clean, but we want to be able to speak your mind. And then that there's anything to do with any kind of appeal with a permit that's land use of some sort of, kind of actually stop right there. And then when there's a Board that's separated for that purpose there, I'll ask you to come to that particular Board. And then if you have cell phones, please silence them so that it would be respectful to those who are at the podium to be able to speak without having the ringer go off or anything. And then Romero has a comment.
Yeah, thank you. First one has, you know, you played through 8.555. "Thurston County does not allow any comments and/or actions on county property that directly or indirectly assist the campaign for election of any person to any office, or for the promotion of or opposition to any ballot measure. Any such comments and/or actions will be stopped, and I will ask the Chair of the Board to recess the meeting if we receive those comments." Thank you.
Okay, with that, I'm just going to go right down the list. First come, first served, so repeat it, okay? So Gordy Scoog. Is there Gordy Scoog? Yes, says residential construction penalties. Okay, we'll go to the next person. Meg Martin. Hello, Meg. I'll come back to Gordy, see if he showed up.
Good afternoon.
There you go, raise it.
My name is Meg Martin, and I am the Executive Director of Homeless Services for Interfaith Works. I'd like to thank the Board of Commissioners for giving me the opportunity to speak with you today, and to extend my gratitude for the concrete steps you are considering today to support a regional approach to addressing the crucial emergency public health crisis in Thurston County that affects us all, homelessness. Before you today are two options to maintain vital access to overnight shelter through the Salvation Army, and to support daytime respite, hygiene services, and connections to vital clinical services at the Community Care Center. At the Community Care Center, or the CCC, as we call it, we have an unprecedented number of clinical services all in one building. We make daily connections to mental health, housing, substance use treatment, primary care, and more, for a population of people who have been living on the margins and disconnected from services for a very, very long time. We provide a supportive place for people to be so that they may access services in a culturally relevant and realistic way, so that they are set up for success from the moment that they come through our door. It's not always easy, and it doesn't always look straightforward, but that's always the goal. The CCC is a vital piece of the puzzle for getting people connected to the support they need to better their lives. We serve people in downtown Olympia, but we serve people from all over Thurston County. Thank you for considering these two necessary proposals. We're really grateful, and it's a huge, huge step in the right direction. Thank you.
You bet. Thank you for your words today, Meg. So next I have on the list is Kimberly Donke. Kimberly, hello. How are you?
Fine.
Yeah, you have the floor. Go ahead, ma'am.
Thank you.
Oh, so you got the microphone too.
Looks like. Turned it up.
All right.
My name is Kimberly Donke. I live up in the Boston Harbor area, so I'm a resident of Thurston County. Thank you for this opportunity to address the Commission. I am a participant with Thurston Climate Action Team, the Sierra Club, Olympia's Unitarian Universalist Congregation, and I'm a mom and have three daughters. And in all of those capacities that I'm here this afternoon to express my strong support for the adoption, or your decision to move forward with the Regional Climate Action Plan put in front of you, as well as to put some financial resources behind that, I realize that those are part of my personal resources, and that you take that responsibility seriously in how you allocate them. And in my opinion, the only prudent decision, economic decision that can be made, is to move ahead with the mitigation plan for a number of reasons, but most importantly being that the sooner we do our part, the lower the cost will be in the long run, as well as I'd like to see Thurston County position ourselves to really be a leader in the clean energy economy moving forward. I guess I'd also just like to come back to the theme that I heard earlier this afternoon in terms of the home visiting program and the importance we put on our children. Totally agree, that's a wonderful program. Quite honestly, moving forward with the climate mitigation plan is one of the most crucial things that we can do at this time for all of our children. So I ask you to move ahead. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your words today, ma'am. And next I have Phyllis Farrell.
Hello.
It's good to see you.
Greetings, Commissioners.
There you go, all right.
My name is Phyllis Farrell, and I live in the Sunwood Lakes Community of Unincorporated Thurston County. Thank you for the opportunity to speak today, urging you to adopt strong local actions on climate change. I believe that's 6C on your agenda today. I urge you to sign on to the Regional Climate Mitigation Plan adopted by the Thurston Regional Planning Council and the cities of Olympia, Tomwater, and Lacey. This plan is aimed at reducing greenhouse gas emissions, causing the negative effects of climate change we have experienced recently, including wildfire risk and associated air quality problems, algae blooms causing water quality problems, sea level rise and flooding risks, as well as in-stream, seasonal in-stream flow deficiency caused by reduced snowpack and melting glaciers. The plan consists of 91 actions local governments can and should implement. It advocates to align land use, hazard mitigation, transportation, capital improvement, and other plans so that they take into account climate change and work toward the same goals. I urge you to adopt this plan, which is a result of years of work by our county staff, and adopted by local jurisdictions, as a blueprint for the future. The county should do no less. It's a socially, fiscally, and environmentally responsible thing to do. And on another matter, I urge you to vote next week for assessing rates and charges for the Thurston Conservation District, providing the support needed for this agency to fulfill its mission, providing technical and financial assistance for voluntary environmental stewardship programs. Thank you.
Thank you so much today, Phyllis, for your word there. Okay, so going to move on, page two, and I have Tom Crawford is the next person.
Good afternoon.
Hello, Tom.
Great to be here.
You bet.
I'm also, my name is Tom Crawford. I live in the Tomwater Hill area of Tomwater, Thurston County. And I'm also here, I also, as you know, I've been working with Thurston Climate Action Team for several years. I'm also here, as previous speakers, to urge you to move forward with cooperating and collaborating with the cities of Olympia, Tomwater, and Lacey on development of a climate mitigation plan. The plan hasn't been developed yet, but this is a historic opportunity for all of the major jurisdictions within Thurston County to collaborate on a very significant piece of work that will have very significant implications, one way or the other, for the future and the well-being and the wealth and the welfare of our county and all our county residents. I'd like to, as was referred to earlier, just mention three or four areas of significant benefit that will most likely accrue from the recommendations coming out of this plan that I hope you will be part of developing. And the most likely, the most likely actions in a climate mitigation plan will create economic opportunities for our businesses and our residents, will create significant cost savings by helping people improve their energy efficiency, and adopt renewable technologies that will bring down the cost of their energy, and will improve our health for our local citizens. down the cost of their energy, and will improve our health for our local citizens. I'd also like to urge you, as you move forward, hopefully you will move forward with this, and assuming you do, also to instruct your staff to look for early opportunities to take action so that you can, you know, realize that this is anticipated to be a 12 to 18-month project. And I think it would be terrific to have early wins identified that you can incorporate into your 2020 policy agenda, your budget, and your legislative priorities. So thank you very much, and thank you for your attention.
You bet. Thank you for your good words today, Tom. So next I have Barbara Scavese. Hello, Barbara. Come on up.
Okay.
You bet.
Hi, I'm Barb Scavese, and I live in the city of Olympia. And I want to thank you for taking into consideration this climate mitigation plan. And I would like to strongly urge the county commissioners to support this plan and fund it. This is a regional effort, and I would, the county needs to take a proactive approach. We are already seeing the effects of a changing climate. We're seeing health effects from bad air days, from the smoke, and even ash coming in from wildfires. We've even seen wildfires in the rainforest. And the city of Olympia is already planning for sea level rise and considering different infrastructure that they will put into place. So I recognize there is a cost to funding this plan and taking the actions that it recommends, but it will be a lot more expensive to manage the problems that we will see if climate change is not addressed and we do not reduce our greenhouse gas emissions. So again, I want to thank you for considering this, and I urge you very strongly, for your children's sake, your grandchildren's sake, my children and grandchildren, and everybody's children, for our future. Thank you very much.
You bet. Thank you for coming today. And next I have, I don't know if Mason hit yes or no, or maybe so. So Mason, are you ready? There you go.
Yes, maybe so.
Yeah, he's got both of them. That's good. Hello there, how you doing there?
Very good. Good afternoon.
All right.
Yeah, my name is Mason Roth. I live in West Olympia, and I want to start by just recognizing that we're on unceded Medicine Creek Treaty territory. I came here today to also support your action in joining the Climate Action Plan. I was very hopeful to see the city of Lacey unanimously support the next phase, and then even more hopeful to see the city of Olympia do the same and create. Several members of the council there recommended what Tom said, taking early action items. With an 18-month plan, I think that's really appropriate. I recently attended the EIS scoping meeting for the Capitol Lake issue, and it sounds like it's not the first one they've done. So one thing I'm a little worried about is this just kind of becoming a shelf document and not really resulting in action. So I really appreciate if moving into developing the plan could really focus on how can we regionally leverage that inter-jurisdictional cooperation to maybe find new sources of financing and support larger projects or stuff like that. And I really appreciate people's comments today referring to future generations. And I've been thinking a lot about these targets. I'm going to be 56 years old in 2050 for where the regional goals are, so I consider myself part of that generation. I'm sure some of the other young people here do as well, so I'd really love to see some positive action on this. Thank you very much.
Thank you for sharing your words today, Mason. So next, I think I have Joe, Joe His, is there a Joe? Yeah, Joe, how you doing there? Come on up.
I've been shorted here.
You have the floor, sir. Go ahead.
I really appreciate being here today. This is my first time before the county council, and I wanted to reaffirm what the previous speakers have said with regard to the air pollution plan that's currently under I want to add that time is running out. The IPCC report said that we probably have about 12 years before runaway change happens. So as far as I'm concerned, the only real moral approach that any level of government can take is to say, let's become independent of fossil fuels. It's that simple. And it may not be always the only legal way, but it's the only right thing to do that I can think of. And I've been asking for years, not knowing quite who to ask. Who's going to help me make the adjustment? Who's going to help me get out of my gas-burning car? Who is going to help me do a host of other things that I ought to be doing? People are still standing in my way. Many are not anymore. So change is with us. Let's make the most of it.
You bet.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you for coming today, sir, and come on back. Okay, so that completes my list of those who signed in. By show of hand, is there anybody? Oh, and Mr. Gordy Scoog, are you here? Gordy, he was the first on the list. Okay, so by show of hand, is there anybody who would like to come to the podium and address the board? Okay, sure. Just one at a time, and come up here and state your name, and I'll write you in.
Hello, and thank you, Honorable Commission, for the opportunity to speak today. My name is Ari Simmons, and I live over on Olympia West Side, just off of Cooper Point. And I'm here today to support the decision to proceed with Phase Two of the Regional Climate Action Plan. I'm a recent graduate of the Evergreen State College Masters of Environmental Studies Program, and my thesis actually focused on small and medium-sized city climate action plan creation and implementation. This climate action plan could not come at a more important time. Scrolling through my Facebook feed, headlines for this week read, "Humanity wiped out 60% of wildlife since 1970," according to The Guardian. "Venice is under 75% of water as Italy confronts widespread flooding and deadly winds," according to Time. And according to the Yale Communications on Climate Change, "Heat makes us stupider." These articles reflect just a tiny snippet of a larger phenomena that has me wondering, what will Thurston County's headlines read? As researchers, as a researcher focused on the impacts of local planning and preparedness for climate disruption, I urge you to join Thurston Regional Planning Council and the cities of Olympia, Tom Water, and Lacey as they create and adopt a region-specific climate action plan and proceed with Phase Two. Doing so would not only ensure additional support for these cities, but would also provide neighboring cities like Yelm to Nino and other territories the opportunity to grow and develop with the plan as well. As, at this incredibly critical time in history, we must work together in all levels of community and all levels of government to develop tangible solutions for the problems we face and understand that the outcomes of our decision here and now will impact the future and serve as examples for cities and counties within and beyond Washington State. Thank you so much for your time and consideration.
All right, thank you. But does cooler make us smarter?
Yes.
Okay, good. I want to be cool. I want to be cool. Okay, come on up. Are you Jasmine by chance?
Yes.
Yeah, sure.
Jasmine.
Jasmine McLean?
Good afternoon.
You bet.
Yes, I'm Jasmine McLean, and I live in the Jubilee Edgewater area over in the Miss Wally Park area.
Sure.
I wanted to thank you for the opportunity, the Board of Commissioners, to speak today. Just a little introduction about me. I'm a Western Washington University graduate. I also went to North Thurston High School, so I'm kind of a local to this area. I also just wanted to express my thanks for the board, considering the climate action plan moving on into Phase Two, following along with many of the other city councils that have done the same in this area. And I wanted to express my concern about the disproportionate impacts that climate change is going to be having on younger people and the rest, you know, my cohort, other people who have just graduated high school, also college. And I also just wanted to express my concern as well.
Oh, you're good. Keep going.
Okay.
Somebody's phone.
Cool. I also wanted to express my concern as well because I feel as though the urgency is sort of ramping up, especially considering the IPCC report that was just released by the UN. And I think that's it. So thank you so much again for the chance to speak.
Thank you for sharing your words today, too.
Yes, of course.
All right. With that in mind, just by show of hand, is there anybody else in the audience who'd like to come to address the board? Once, twice? Okay, we'll move on to the next portion of the agenda. Next, we have the County Manager's Update, and I'll turn to the County Manager, Romero Chavez, and see if he has any words to say.
Yeah, thank you, Commissioners. I just have a couple items for you. And let me give you a little bit of history. Back in October 3, 2018, here at the Thurston County Courthouse Campus, we had a power outage. And as a result of that, obviously, the first call is Puget Sound Energy. And they promptly responded to this emergency because all the county operations were affected. Through their examination, they determined the issue was internal to the county. It was related to the aging infrastructure the courthouse has. But with no hesitation, PSE provided enough support to the extent they redirected a subconsultant, Patelco, to come to the county and fix the problem on the timely matter. So I would like to ask Ms. Kelsey Hulse to come to the podium so the Board of County Commissioners can formally provide a big thank you to PSE for their incredible support in getting this going on that day, keeping us out of the dark in a way.
Hello, Kelsey.
Hi.
So the board has a letter of appreciation for you, and if you don't mind, I can probably
read that if you like.
Read it. Go on, second.
Ms. Kelsey Hulse. Early on October 3, 2018, Thurston County experienced a severe power systems outage at the courthouse campus. While an emergency generator-powered life safety systems in the three main courthouse buildings, normal business operations were severely compromised. Puget Sound Energy crews responded promptly, and after examining their infrastructure, it was determined the source of the problem was the county equipment. Even so, with our permission, PSE crews continued to assist county facilities staff in identifying the source of the outage and determined the failure was in the main power cables near the courthouse plaza. PSE recommended calling in a specialized vendor for further testing and repair. The county contacted Patelco to assist, but were advised that all crews were otherwise engaged in work for others. However, Patelco offered that if PSE agreed to release them from a project, they would come to the courthouse. PSE promptly agreed to this request and also agreed to provide the necessary parts from their warehouse. The sustained collaboration and support from PSE was a critical factor in completing repairs and restoring power systems at the courthouse on the same day. County leaders recognize and are very grateful to PSE for its support. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, Kelsey. Do you have any words to say? How PSE is doing? Public, yeah.
And you were there, you were there working on it, right?
I will say I was not part of that project repair. Unfortunately, our hard-working crews couldn't be here today because they're out preparing for storm season as we speak. But we really appreciate the recognition. We have great, hard-working people on our staff, and it's nice to see them recognized. So thank you.
So he has to say something to her?
Thank you. And you represent PSE very well. Thank you, Kelsey.
Thanks.
And thank you so much for being there, not only for this time, but many other times. We talked about climate change, the energy, and all the things that Puget Sound does for us.
The letter, the letter.
The letter?
Yes.
All right. Here we go.
Thanks, Kelsey.
So the next item on the agenda is the consent items. Oh, you had other things. All right, I was ready to go.
Speaking of awesome heroes. Two weeks ago, I was, about 8:00 in the afternoon, I get a frantic phone call and a message. Their network systems failed completely. So it was going through the process of a panic, and what is it that we need to do? Because county offices most likely will be affected the next day. So through the process, our IT group worked endlessly that night, and they resolved the issue partially by 1:00 in the morning on that day. So I would like probably to ask Martin Casey, the Central Services Director, to come forth and introduce those awesome heroes. Because without their dedication and their commitment to the county, those operations would have been affected again in the county. Martin?
Thank you, Senator. Yes, Saturday evening, about 7:00. 7:00 was when we first got word that there were issues with the controllers that serve the servers. And one of our staff was already here on site working the problem, Todd Gibson. He also called in assistance from Corey Lehman and from Craig Thorson to help come in and problem-solve that with the vendor, with a couple of vendors overnight. And they put in an extraordinary amount of effort to make sure that everything was back up and running smoothly for operations the next morning. They're sort of there in the back hiding.
Bring him up.
And actually Craig came in, he was actually out sick that week. He came in anyway to help spell Todd, who had worked about 18 hours straight before he got a break. So it was an extraordinary effort to keep things moving and be seamless operations for the county the next day.
Thank you so much for what you do.
Thank you very much. General, part and parcel of the aging structure in that perspective?
Not necessarily.
Not necessarily. Okay. You want to be sure. Okay.
Anything else?
No.
Okay, let's move on to consent items. And so we have consent items A through E. Ask if there's a motion to approve the consent items.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve consent items A through E.
Second?
To move the second to approve the consent items A through E. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, and that motion carries. So now we'll move on to the department items, and we have item number four, which is the Sheriff's Office. And this is the Set of Public Hearing to amend the Thurston County Ordinance Chapters 12.04 and 12.61 Traffic Code, creating a new section defining wield all-terrain vehicles and a new section allowing the operation of wield all-terrain vehicles on county roads. We have, again, Sheriff Snazza to give us a little bit of background. Any questions? You got the floor, sir?
Well, first, I appreciate the opportunity. And what I'm asking is that about three or four years ago, they passed an all-terrain vehicle legislative law that allows it for vehicles, licensed vehicles, to be able to commute about in 35 mile an hour or less. And so working with the Prosecutor's Office, we were able to come up with a way that we would be able to present this to the Commission and hopefully to the public and show why I believe it's important that we are able to enact that part of the law in Thurston County. So I'm asking that you allow it to be open to public comment, and so we can get down to why or why not it should happen.
Sure. Any comments to the sheriff or questions?
Yeah, maybe one quick question. I know this is going to affect those roadways that are 35 miles an hour or less. Is there any possibility of having any connecting language so that we can cross the road if it's more than 35, or go a block, or whatever? Just trying to make it more available if we are going to do this. Have you ever heard of anyone trying to do that, or any jurisdiction trying to do that?
So the law is very clear about the 35 mile an hour or less through the RCW. Where I really don't want to muddy the waters is because when we say, okay, we can travel down a, let's just say, a 40 mile an hour road for just a half a mile, it's only a half a mile. The difference is, is the law. And until it changes, I believe that the 35 mile an hour or less is... And until it changes, I believe that the 35 mile an hour or less is set for all-terrain vehicles, that that's a safe speed, and they don't want them going any faster because that's the way they're designed. So my recommendation would be is that we would enforce the law. I know I don't like the idea of people wanting to skirt it, but if we start skirting that, then what else do I need to look past? And I don't believe we should be skirting that.
Okay. Any questions with the sheriff?
Uh, no, thank you, sir.
Just out of curiosity, how many other counties are doing something similar to this, or Zach?
Well, the largest county that is on the west side is Snohomish County. They're the ones who are enacting it. And the reason why, one of the reasons why I asked for it is because of our recreational ability to recreate out there in Capital Forest. And if you're looking out east in the Yelm area, the wood lines out there, and what we were seeing is a lot of all-terrain vehicles, whether they're side-by-sides or ATVs, that they were driving up and down the roadways, and they're thinking that they just hope they wouldn't get caught. So being able to get them licensed and make them legal, it makes us all feel better that we're at least following the law. Or at least, I hope we are.
Yeah, that's okay. Is there a motion?
Mr. Chair, I move to set a public hearing for November 27, 2018, at 3:00 PM at the Thurston County Courthouse Building 1, Room 280, or soon thereafter, as the matter may be heard, to receive public comment on amending Thurston County Ordinance Chapters 12.04 and 12.61 Traffic Code, creating a new section defining wheeled all-terrain vehicles and a new section allowing the operation of wheeled all-terrain vehicles on county roads with posted speed limits of 35 miles per hour or less.
Second?
It's been moved and seconded and stated. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, and that motion carries.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
You bet. So the next item is number five on the agenda, is emergency services. But before Kirk gets up there, hang on, Kirk, I'm going to bring up the public health and services. Because, I was going to say something. Okay, so the public health and social services, and then we have two items on there. But before we go with the two items, I want to ask the Honorable Mayor of Olympia, Ms. Cheryl Selby, if she'd like to come and say something in respect to the two items. And that way, we can hear what she has to say.
I have a couple handouts.
Sure. You're more than welcome.
With the sheriff's escort.
I'd be glad to escort.
Yeah. Hello, mayor, how you doing, Aunt Ann?
Doing well today. Thank you for the time on your agenda to address items 6A and 6B. So thank you for your consideration today of those two items. One of those is funding Interfaith Works' good work at the Providence Community Care Center, and as well, looking at funding for the Salvation Army's conversion to a 24/7 model of service. Want to also thank you for the $25,000 that you've set aside for cold weather or the Code Blue Winter Shelter System, and that you are moving forward with hiring a full-time homeless program coordinator. We're especially excited about that in Olympia because we have Colin DeForest on board, who's been doing amazing work for us, and he's very excited about working with whoever you hire in that position. I also want to take a brief moment to explain what Olympia City Council has approved to fund to date for homeless services. We have expanded the ability of community youth services to go 24/7 at the rate of $220,000. As we know, a 24/7 shelter system is now becoming known as a best practice. We've also given money to the Fund the Day Center at the expansion of Salvation Army downtown, and that is to, again, take them to a 24/7 model. We've given $50,000, or we've set aside $50,000 to procure storage units for folks that have no place to put their, all their belongings during the day. And then as well, the big-ticket item here is the $580,000 that we have funded to set up our very first tiny home village on city property over by our Justice Center off of Plum Street. That is slated to open, hopefully, before the end of the year. As well, we were partners with a group of faith community members that did a tiny home workshop this last Saturday over at Evergreen Christian Community Church. It was well-attended, and we're hoping that we can further those relationships with our faith community to provide sites for small groupings of tiny homes. So with that, the results of all of that shows on this graph here that I've given you two, that shows that with all of these initiatives, the city of Olympia has increased their capacity for day shelter to an additional 237 beds, or it's beds, and then at night, 90. But we're faced as well with the harsh reality that there are currently over 300 unsheltered people sleeping in our downtown. We are looking at setting up our first-ever mitigation site on a city piece of property downtown. But that's probably only going to be able to help about 80 of those people at night. So again, I'm here on behalf of my council to ask this commission to consider county property for an additional, or additional sites for mitigation for this winter. There's no way that we can accommodate everybody to keep them safe at night and warm and fed by ourselves. And as well, that leads me to one more ask, and that's that we reset the table for more collaboration in the future. In the absence of having a place at the table for elected officials to set policy and priorities for the county's dollars, we can't effectively represent the current and emerging needs of our homeless residents. As I mentioned earlier, we have a growing crisis downtown, and we have limited funds and limited tools at our discretion to mitigate this crisis. We've declared a homeless crisis, you've declared a homeless crisis. We are asking that we reconvene some form of body with elected officials from all the, certainly the larger three cities, so that we can help you with your new homeless program coordinator to find the best priorities for those dollars. Thank you.
Just want to make sure, any questions?
Any questions?
No, thank you very much, mayor.
I have a question of staff. Where are we with the hiring process on that coordinator?
I believe it's been advertised.
That's what we're sold, infant stage still.
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you. Okay, thank you, mayor. Okay, so still continuing with the public health and social services. We have Shelley Slaughter, the Director of Public Health and Social Services, to tell us about the approved contract with the Salvation Army, to approve a contract with the Salvation Army for emergency shelter operation calls. Is that right, Shelley?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay.
Thank you. Good afternoon, commissioners. I'm Shelley Slaughter, Director of Thurston County Public Health and Social Services, and thank you so much to Mayor Selby for her words. And we're very happy to be able to partner with our cities on the projects that I'm about to propose to you in items 6A and 6B. I also just wanted to answer your question, Commissioner Hutchings, on where we're at on the process of hiring for the homeless coordinator. And we do have applicants and are prepared to do interviews next week, and we've invited additional panelists from the cities to participate in that process, including the city of Olympia.
Thank you.
So, very grateful. So, with that being said, for item 6A, I'm here to ask you to approve a contract between Thurston County and Salvation Army, with Salvation Army, to provide emergency shelter for homeless single men and women for the duration of November 1st through August 31st for a maximum total consideration of $65,000. The Salvation Army submitted this request to us via a letter indicating that they have a significant shortfall in operating funding for their upcoming year due to the loss of the primary sponsor of their programs. You heard from Captain Mark Sterns a couple meetings ago, I believe. He came during the public comment period and spoke to you. And I'm just going to read a little quick portion of their letter. So Salvation Army said, "As winter approaches, I'm writing to seek your support for our mission to serve the needs of people in the greater Olympia area. Your assistance will help us to create a 24/7 shelter that will provide a safe, warm, and welcoming place for our homeless citizens. As a managed low-barrier shelter, our facility will serve all without discrimination." The letter further goes on to explain that they proposed to launch their first 24/7 shelter, that I believe they will call the Hope Center, that will accommodate 37 people year-round and will offer following services and resources: overnight shelter and their newly remodeled Salvation Army Lodge, three meals per day in partnership with Catholic Community Services, a new day center with services and referrals, some storage, as well as onsite case management, along with other service providers. They have also sought out similar requests for funding with the cities of Lacey, Olympia, and Tumwater, and the support by Thurston County will help to make a complete funding package. The Department of Social, excuse me, Public Health and Social Services will provide funding for this project with your authorization through our Homeless Housing Fund, and this funding will support the county's strategic plan initiative three, which is collaboration with community partners to reduce homelessness and implement Thurston Thrives housing strategies, and is also in alignment with your recently-approved five-year homeless housing plan. And we will share this information in a press release.
All right, any questions, Shelley?
No, I think I'm all for it.
Nope, absolutely, by direction.
All right, is there a motion to approve?
We're doing A.
A first.
A first. We approve the contract between the county and the Salvation Army to provide emergency shelter for homeless, single men and women for the duration of November 1, 2018, through August 31, 2019, for a maximum total consideration of $65,000, and authorize the Director of Public Health and Social Services to sign the contract.
Second?
It's been moved and seconded and stated. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, and that motion carries.
Thank you very much, commissioners.
And 6B?
6B, I'm here to request that you approve a contract between Thurston County and Interfaith Works to provide $223,000 in program operating funding for the Community Care Center for the duration of November 1st through August 31st. Interfaith Works submitted a response to a 2018 request for proposal that we issued back in spring. That request for proposals was for day services, and Interfaith Works submitted a response to provide operating costs to enhance the services that they provide at the Community Care Center located in downtown Olympia. You heard from their executive director, Meg Martin, just earlier in public comment that shared information about what they will do, which includes providing very critically-needed respite services, hygiene services, health services, and other social supportive services to those without housing in our community. They coordinate with other local service providers at the Community Care Center, including Providence Behavioral Health, Sidewalk, the Olympia Free Clinic, Behavioral Health Resources, Capital Recovery Center, Safe Place Community Services, Partners in Prevention Education, Home and Community Services, Community Action Council, Veterans Primary Care and CIMAR. So they're doing a lot of amazing work all in one place at the Community Care Center. And this program serves between 100 and 200 individuals a day. So that is a lot. In addition to the request of the county for funding, Interfaith Works also provided additional funding for their own programs and received support from city of Olympia and city of Tumwater as well for this request. The funding for this program, we also propose to come from the Homeless Housing Fund, and this request has my support and is in alignment with the county's strategic plan initiative three, collaboration with community partners to reduce homelessness and implement Thurston Thrives housing strategies, and is in alignment with your recently-approved five-year homeless housing plan.
Right, any questions with Shelley for this?
No, thank you.
A lot of work going on behind the scenes that most people don't even see or hear about. So, thank you.
Amazing services that both programs are providing.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve the contract between the county and Interfaith Works to provide $223,000 in program operating funding for the Community Care Center for the duration of November 1, 2018, through August 31, 2019, for a maximum total consideration of $223,000, and authorize the Director of Public Health and Social Services to sign the contract.
Second?
It's been moved and seconded and stated. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, and that motion carries as well.
Thank you so much.
You bet. Thank you, and thank the mayor for her words and her support. Okay, 6C is the Climate Mitigation Plan, and that's Phase II of the inter-local agreement. We have Mr. Chris Hawkins to give a little bit of background about the actual Phase II and how we go forward.
Good afternoon, commissioners. My name is Chris Hawkins. I'm the Community Engagement Evidence and Partnerships Manager at Thurston County Public Health and Social Services, here to provide you with our recommended action today of approving the inter-local agreement to enter into Phase II of the Climate Mitigation Plan with the cities of Lacey, Olympia, and Tumwater. As you know, this is the second phase of a project that you've already been engaged with this year, and climate stabilization is an important public health, as well as economic and overall community concern and issue that's vital. By joining this effort, the board is taking action on one of its strategic plan initiatives, that being Initiative Nine, which is about supporting environmental health and climate stabilization. And you've heard a lot of interest about this issue, obviously, here today, but in previous meetings as well. In fact, entering into the agreement to participate in Phase I of the project, followed from a presentation from the Thurston Thrives Climate and Clean Energy Work Group, several members of which are here today, Tom Crawford being one of those, and Barb Scavasi being another, and Mike Burnham from Thurston Regional Planning Council, all here today. But you heard from them earlier this year on this same project. So this is an opportunity to continue that effort as a partnership effort with the other local governments here in Thurston County, the largest cities. It complements an adaptation plan that has already been worked on and approved here in Thurston County, that is trying to address the impacts of climate change, which are already starting to be apparent in our community and that we need to be able to be responsive to. But it allows the county also to work on preventing climate change. In other words, doing our part to reduce the emissions that are contributing to an enhanced greenhouse effect. So the emissions of carbon from burning fossil fuels being an example of that, this is an effort to reduce those emissions towards shared targets. And the commission earlier this year took action already on that Phase I effort, which was to establish common targets. Those targets are to reduce those emissions by 45% below 2015 levels by the year 2030, and by 85% below 2015 levels by the year 2050. Those are science-based targets, and they are the ones that the other jurisdictions have agreed with you to pursue as our common goal. So that brings us to this point, which is to begin work on how do we achieve those targets. And the Climate Mitigation Plan is the path forward on that. The course of action would be to form up a steering committee that would be composed of both policymakers from the local jurisdictions participating in this, as well as their staff. But policymakers would be the decision-makers on that steering committee. There would also be a consultant team that would be brought together by Thurston Regional Planning Council to assist in the analysis of the different actions, to weigh their costs and benefits, and find the ones that have the biggest benefits to our community and the lowest cost. And help us reach those targets. So that is the charge that is coming forward in this Phase II of the effort. There would also be a really important element of public engagement in this process, and a stakeholder group would be assembled to help guide the development of those specific strategies and actions. That would be widely representative of the community. So it's a really, I think, a very thoughtful and deliberative approach that is being proposed here, and one that is our best shot at doing our part to meet those targets in reducing our carbon emissions. So I'm happy to answer any questions you have, and hope that you'll vote to approve this today.
No, I don't. Thank you, Chris.
Nope, thank you, Chris.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chris. Is there a motion?
Yes, on behalf of Jasmine, Kimberly, Phyllis, Tom, Barb, Mason, Joe, Ari, and many others.
And no, Mason and Mason.
Mason, I got Mason.
He's going to be 56 when this happens, so.
I move to approve the inter-local agreement with the cities of Lacey, Olympia, and Tumwater to collaborate during Phase II to complete the regional climate action plan.
Second?
It's been moved and seconded and stated. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Aye, and so your motion carries. Thank you, Chris.
Thank you very much.
So now, I'm going to go to number five, which is the emergency services, and have Mr. Kirk Harding come up and give a little bit of background on a contract for Homeland Security Grant.
Thank you. Commissioners, I'm coming for you to request that the board approve the federal fiscal year 2018 Homeland Security Grant for the period of September 1st, 2018, through December 31st of 2020, for a total of $274,596. The federal fiscal year 2018 Homeland Security Grant for the period of September 1st, 2018, The Federal Fiscal Year 2018 Homeland Security Grant Program provides funding to implement investments that build, sustain, and deliver the core capabilities essential to achieving the national preparedness goal of a secure and resilient nation. This is a grant that we receive annually from the federal government, passed through from the state of Washington. Thurston County Emergency Management is, I was wondering if it was the tie.
I was going to ask you about that.
Thurston County Emergency Management is the coordinating agency for Homeland Security Region III, which concludes the county, cities, and tribes in Gray's Harbor, Lewis, Mason, Pacific, and Thurston Counties. Federal Fiscal Year 2018 Homeland Security Grant funding is awarded from Washington State to Thurston County to support Region III programs. Thurston County funding portion allows all jurisdictions within the county to apply for the grant funding. The County Emergency Management Council approves the specific grant request for the county, and law enforcement is guaranteed a minimum of 25% of the project funding per federal requirements. This Homeland Security Program Agreement with the Washington State Military Department is federal pass-through funding, and this is 100% federally funded, and no county general funds are used. Funding will reimburse eligible expenses for equipment, exercises, training, planning, and activities throughout the Homeland Security Region III, including during the period September 1, 2018, through December 31, 2020. Revenues and expenditures associated with this agreement were anticipated and are included in the department's 2018 and, correction, 2019 and 2020 budget requests. This contract supports the county's Strategic Plan through Initiative Four, Strengthen Emergency Management Planning and Community Disaster Preparedness. We have a communications plan that if it's approved by the board here, we will use social media and the website and outreach to media to advertise and let everybody know that this contract was approved. Therefore, respectfully request the board approve the Federal Fiscal Year 2018 Homeland Security Grant.
Questions or comments?
No, thank you, Kurt.
I just want you to explain to the public the purpose of the tie, the meaning behind it.
So, for those who can see me in the public, I, with the Director of Trial Defense Services, we are alma maters, happen to be playing football this past weekend. We entered to agreement, and my alma mater is known for academics over athletics, and so therefore did not come through. So I am wearing this tie today in support of that agreement, one never entered to an agreement with a lawyer. And then, so as I said this morning, the other piece is, is that since I put this tie on, I've had a need to go out and fill out applications at the fast food industry.
But you look fetching in it, in a way, Kurt.
Is there a motion?
I move to approve the Federal Fiscal Year 2018 Homeland Security Grant, FFY18 HSGP Number E19-074, for the period of September 1, 2018, through December 31, 2020, for a total of $274,596, and authorize the Director of Emergency Services to sign the agreement, as well as future amendments that do not change the approved dollar amount by more than 25%.
Second.
It's been moved in second as stated. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, and so your motion carries, Kurt.
Thank you.
Thank you so much for being a supporter. Next is number seven, which is from the Community Planning and Economic Development, and we have Andrew Defobus, a planner here, to tell us a little bit about the 2018 Open Space Tax Program application and so forth.
Good afternoon, Chair Blake and Commissioners. I'm Andrew Defobus, an associate planner with Community Planning and Economic Development Department. So I'm here today to receive your decision and direction regarding a pending Open Space Tax Program application. The Open Space Tax Program is a tax incentive program for keeping land in an open space state. A property tax reduction results because land is valued at a percentage of market value based on a public benefit rating system in the program. In exchange for that enrollment, property owners agree to steward the resources that are on their property. So we have one application this year from the Lake Moore Community Club Board. That is the duly-elected body that represents the Lake Moore community out there at Kenlake. It's a 21.6 acre forested property that's adjacent to the community itself. The applicants propose to reclassify that parcel from one category to another within the Open Space Tax Program. They wish to operate a recreational trail on the property, and their current open space approval does not currently allow public access. So they're requesting that the property be reclassified as a private recreation area. And the Board of County Commissioners' role in these open space applications is to determine whether they meet the criteria of the Open Space Tax Program. If approved, the applicants would receive a 50% tax reduction on land enrolled in the program, which is a smaller reduction than they're currently receiving, which is currently 70%. The Planning Commission held a public hearing on the application on June 6, 2018, and recommended approval of the application. The board also held its public hearing on September 18, 2018. And that's all the remarks that I have for today. Take any questions you may have.
Any questions of Andrew?
Could you just touch on the tax issue that it's not going to cost anybody?
Talking about the shift?
Yeah, the shift.
Sure, I'm always trying to get a better handle on it myself. So essentially, programs, properties that are enrolled in the program, they get a tax reduction. So in this case, their tax reduction will be smaller going forward than it's been in the past. With any of these properties, any taxes that are deferred because properties in the Open Space Tax Program are made up by the other property owners within the tax code area, which is farther, a larger geographic area than just that parcel itself. So, and that's, this isn't the only program that causes tax shift, the senior citizen tax exemption, historic property tax exemption, all those things cause taxes to shift to other entities within the tax code area. But with regards to this specific property and open space approval, if it's approved as requested, the tax burden on other residents in that tax code area would go down because the taxes for this specific parcel will increase relative to that open space.
Thank you, Andrew.
I have no questions. Thank you, Andy.
None either here, so is there a motion?
Yes, Mr. Chair, I move to approve the 2018 Open Space Tax Program application from the Lake Moore Community Club, and authorize the Chair of the Board of County Commissioners to sign the Open Space Taxation Agreement once recreational use has been verified by Thurston County.
Second.
It's been moved in second as stated. All those in favor say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye, and so your motion carries.
Thank you.
Yay.
Yep.
They brought the ferns, okay. So, okay, I'm going to go to item number 8A and skip that and ask the county manager if there's anything he'd like to say at this point before we go into the public hearing.
Yeah, let me walk you briefly to your upcoming schedule, and again, the appointments that will be included in my report is where at least two Commissioners will be present. Following the Board of County Commissioners, you have a public hearing related to the proposed Transportation Improvement Program for 2019 to in 2024. At 5:30 in the afternoon, you will consider public testimony on the marijuana renewal ordinance Wednesday, October 31st. At 9:00 in the morning, you have the opportunity to have a ribbon-cutting ceremony on the Hunter Point Fish Passage Culvert. On Thursday, November 1st, at 9:00 in the morning, you have a briefing on conservation futures. At 9:30, you have a briefing on the Polo Works Project Delivery Process. At 10:00 in the morning, you have a briefing of the Thurston Conservation District, and as a follow-up to the conversation you had this morning. At 12:00 noon, you have the State Audit Office exit interview for the 2018 audit. And at 1:00 in the afternoon, you have your regular update with Superior Court. At 2:00 in the afternoon, November 1st, you have an update on the comprehensive plan, the Maryland's designation. And at 2:30 in the afternoon, you have a briefing on the draft 2019, 2024 Western Washington Phase II Municipal Water Permit. That's the MPDES. And at 3:00 in the afternoon, you have another briefing on the water availability and the stream flow restoration. Nothing on November 2nd, which is Friday. Moving on to next week, Monday, November 5th, at 10:30, you have a briefing on the proposed Budget Amendment Number Seven for the 2017, 2018 biannual budget.
All righty, any questions of Romero?
No.
No.
Okay, with that in mind, is there a motion to adjourn?
Mr. Chair, I move to adjourn the BOCC meeting of October 30, 2018.
Second.
It's been moved in second as stated. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, so we are adjourned and go right into the public hearing for the Transportation Improvement Program. Good afternoon, this is the Thurston County Board of County Commissioners for October 30, 2018. Today we have, conducting a public hearing on the consideration of adoption of the six-year Transportation Improvement Program for the calendar years 2019 and 2024. The purpose and background is pursuant to state law, in the Washington Administrative Code, the county is required to adopt the six-year Transportation Improvement Plan, an annual road program each year. The proposed programs include various roadway construction and planning projects, including but not limited to bridge replacements, bicycle and pedestrian facilities, and roadway upgrades. The proposed program was presented to the Board of County Commissioners on September 12, 2018, has been available to the Thurston County Public Works Department for public review and comment since the date it has been presented, and is still on the Public Works website. In addition, the proposed program was made available to the chambers of commerce, community, and neighborhood groups, and interested citizens. There's a sign-in sheet in the back. For those who have not been here, sign in, and then we'll bring you forward to the podium when called on. You'll have three minutes to testify and tell us where you are from the county and your first and last name. And, okay, and so then I'll ask Scott Lindblum, who is here at the podium, who is the staff for the six-year Transportation Improvement Plan, to give us a little bit of background and ask Commissioners if they have any comments or questions, and then we'll open it up for public comment. Scott?
All right, good afternoon, Commissioners. I'm Scott Lindblum, the county engineer for Thurston County. Appreciate your time this afternoon. As you mentioned, the annual six-year Transportation Improvement Program, we call it the TIP, is required by you, the county Commissioners, pursuant to RCW 3681121. The TIP itself is a comprehensive document that consolidates several legislative requirements into a single document. I'll just run through the highlight of what some of those different legislative requirements are. First and foremost, it outlines the legal and regulatory requirements that guide our road program. It includes our revenues and expenditures for the county road program, includes our transportation programs and our project prioritization, includes the annual road program, which is essentially the first year of the six-year transportation program. It includes the 2019 to 2024 Transportation Improvement Program, the 2019 to 2039 Capacity Projects List, and finally, it contains the 2018 Annual Bridge Report. The TIP is an essential tool that helps us effectively plan and manage the county road system, which is perhaps the county's largest, biggest investment, with a value of nearly $1 billion. The proposed program continues to be qualified based on the availability of financial support, and one which is minimal, given the needs of the county. As you mentioned, the proposed program has been made available to the chambers of commerce, community and neighborhood groups, and interested citizens for review and comment. It's been on our Public Works website, and we have, like we do every year, we send this draft TIP out to the neighboring jurisdictions. The six-year Transportation Improvement Program is in alignment with the county's strategic plan and initiative to support robust and well-maintained infrastructure systems for a thriving community. As you mentioned, I did provide the TIP to you on September 12th, and this requirement, or this request, excuse me, meets the requirements of the RCW, again, 3681130. And for those interested, or those in the public, I do have several copies of the paper copies of the TIP available, should anyone so choose to review it. And with that, I'll see if there's any questions.
Any questions of Scott?
No, but I would like to see that when this meeting's over, if you would, please.
Oh, certainly.
Any questions of Scott?
No, I don't, Scott. Thank you.
Thank you.
I have none either, so with that, see, anybody in the public like to come to the podium? Seeing no one has signed in, or anyone in the podium, in the public to raise their hand to come forward to the podium, I'll ask if there's a motion to close the public hearing.
I move to close the public hearing on the six-year Transportation Improvement Program for the calendar years 2019 through 2024.
Second.
It's been moved in second to close the public hearing. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, and we have closed the public hearing, and we are, is there a motion to adjourn?
Mr. Chair, I move to adjourn the public hearing of October 30, 2018.
Second.
It's been moved in second to adjourn the public hearing. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, and that motion carries. We are adjourned.